... which is at about a 1.7% interest right now. In order to advance projects, rather than trying to do it over a 20-year period, accelerate these 12 projects over the next five to seven years, we would also then put us in a very good position to be a part of the nationally competitive grant program. Things aren't the way it used to be. It used to be you could get a grant and we only had to pay 7.34%, which was a federal statute. But in these new competitive grant programs, to be competitive, and we've been very competitive on two grants, we've had to get into the 30% to 40% local match, and with the state putting in money as well. So that's kind of the way things are going. This local option provides the local portion for those competitive grant programs that we've been... So we're not asking the public to pay 100%. We know there's people coming in from other states choosing the roads, but this would be the local portion and then relying on additional state funds and federal funds to actually make it happen.
Okay.
One of the things unique about the local vehicle registration fee option, it is the only one in Idaho code where local counties can actually help themselves rather than relying on other sources. Right now, the funds for vehicle registration fees and gas tax goes into highway revenue account. And let me get the... Sorry. The highway revenue account in 2019 generated $476,220,000. Of that, the jurisdictions within Cootney County received $13,47,000, which is 2.73% of that amount. Of that, the four highway districts got 1.16%, and the 13 cities collectively got 1.1%. So, the return on investment on a dollar basis for going into the highway revenue account is about 2.7 cents on the dollar, whereas with the local option, we get 98.5% of it back directly into transportation projects in Cootney County.
Understood.
So, from that standpoint, the return on investment is much better than some of the traditional ways. The ballot question, therefore, would be to make it for 20 years in order to achieve a long-term, low-interest loan, and then it would be for $50 regardless of vehicles. Motorcycles would be 25. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Glenn?
Yeah. Is this a supermajority required to pass or just a simple?
It's a simple majority.
Okay.
I might also add that the Coeur d'Alene Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors have unanimously endorsed it. The Post Falls Chamber of Commerce has unanimously endorsed it, the NIBCA, and the Cootney County Board of Realtors.
Okay. And do you know when the language has to be to elections?
It has to be approved by the Board of County Commissioners and transmitted to the Secretary of State prior to September 4th.
Okay. So if we put it on next week's business meeting, we still have plenty of time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
What happens if people vote it down?
Then the roads are going to get worse. And right now, to give you an example, the 2020 Transportation Improvement Program, which outlines all the projects, was about $520 million over the next six years. We have some very big projects that are going on right now with the completion of the Wilbur Street Project, 95 improvements, the interchange up at 53 and 95, Highway 41 going on. Those are all what you would call booked. They're under construction. Our program goes down to $250 million over the next six years with those projects coming off the books, and we really don't see much in terms of revenue. In 2015, the legislature approved five cents a gallon additional, but they limited it to rehabilitation and basically maintenance of our existing system. So that five cents, we couldn't... It was also run through the highway revenue account, and we could not use those funds for any of these projects because these are projects that would actually add some capacity.
So are you going to undertake a large, vigorous, intensive educational effort? Because I think if you walked on the street and say, "How about another 50 bucks on your car registration?", people are going to go, "No."
Well, I'm hopeful that people realize... One of the number-one things that we hear, and I think most elected officials hear, is how bad the roads are getting, how transportation congestion.
Absolutely.
For 14 cents today, I think it's a good investment.
Well, they've got to make that connection, though.
Right. And I believe there's a group that's willing to do that.
Okay. Because I'm concerned.
Any other questions for Glenn?
Nope.
Okay, then. So you did call out an action item bill, but we're not going to be voting on it today. So I guess with two or more of us in favor, we can move it on to the business meeting for next week?
Yeah.
Make sense?
Sure, sure.
Okay, off we go.
Thank you.
Next Tuesday afternoon, 2:00.
Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Were there any more questions for Glenn, by the way? No, I guess not.
The audience.
Okay, fine. Moving on to the... Can everybody hear or is the thing... Is it too loud?
We just can't hear, that's all.
Okay, moving on to the second item. Fund balance allocation for National Academy of Sciences study for Coeur d'Alene Lake. So you might recall during one of the budget workshops, I had brought up the question of reallocating some of the fund balance money toward the study, which is expected to commence October 1st of this year to determine the status of the health of Coeur d'Alene Lake. And in case you're not aware, the governor has decided that he is going to... Or the state is going to proceed with this, I think in an effort to try to reconcile the differences among the various parties. That is, the state... When I say the state, that's DEQ, Department of Environmental Quality, EPA, and the Coeur d'Alene Tribe because they're the three primary parties that are most concerned. And so initially, when the quote came in, it was supposed to be something around $985,000. It's expected to take about two years. Since then, it has come down to about $775,000. When I first raised this, what happened is Jake Garringer, and Jake might be listening on YouTube, took it up to the governor's office, and I got a response last week that said, "Please, we would welcome your participation." So the county has never really... I was going to say contributed, invested, other than manpower in the health of the lake. When I say manpower, I mean the basin commission and that sort of thing. And so this study is supposed to come out with a range of options. It doesn't appear as though the results will dictate that, you know, there's only one solution. So it's expected that there will be a range of technologies that are available, and then the participating parties would potentially decide, "Okay, here's the situation." Now, is it possible that a recommendation could be made that's unaffordable? Potentially, but then if that's the case, guess what? Then some other fallback position would have to be taken. But I think it's time that the county fess up. And my proposal is, we have approximately $5 million that's allocated, fund balanced toward new construction. I'd like to take $200,000 of that. I did have a conference call last week with Jay Garringer and Dan McCracken, who is the regional supervisor for DEQ for this area. And basically, we would work out the logistics as to how we paid. If it's progress payments, we would pay as DEQ pays. If it's money upfront, we would handle it much the same way. So that's my proposal. I'd like to bring it forth to a business meeting if I could. Concerns, questions?
I'm very concerned about the lake, but I... Since being elected, people have said, "Well, you have to work with the tribe." And I don't mind working with the tribe, but I understand the tribes got up and walked away from the table. And I find it very difficult to negotiate with, work with, cooperate with, or communicate with anybody who's got up and walked out of the room. So I'd like a different attitude from the tribe, at least vis-à-vis Cootney County. I think this is money well-spent, but it's got to be all stakeholders involved.
Okay. So let me try to respond to that.
Sure.
Over the years, the tribe has actually invested in studies, and they believe that the studies that they've conducted and invested in demonstrate there's reason for concern for the lake. And because of what they perceive to be largely inaction, they withdrew. You're absolutely right. But I think that's why the governor has now stepped in and said, "Okay, guys, we've got an impasse, and we're going to get this thing resolved, and the only way to do it is to go to an independent third party that has the expertise, hence the study."
I just haven't been very impressed, honestly. And I was a big supporter during the campaign, but I haven't been very impressed with the governor's leadership.
Well, in any case, are we okay for bringing it up to the business meeting next week?
Yes. I probably will not be in favor of it at that time. I do agree with the study. I'd like to know how much EPA is putting in towards this and the other stakeholders involved. I just have a concern that, you know, taking money from Bayview and Athol and some of the northern Spirit Lake, Twin Lakes, to do a study for Coeur d'Alene Lake, you know, is just something that I have to think over and reconcile in my mind. Because yes, it has a lot to do with Cootney County, but there's a bunch of other lakes here, too, that are not getting this kind of attention.
Okay. So where we are, I can answer your question at least partially. The state has already committed to proceeding. How they're working it out with EPA is unknown at this time. Whether it's 50/50, whatever that split is, we don't know. So they're still negotiating with EPA, but the state is committed to beginning the study October 1st. It was originally supposed to begin June 1st. I think it got re-scoped, so now it's going to commence October 1st. So the state is... My understanding is it's committed to going forward, so... Okay, so we'll just... Concerns are noted. Jake is listening in, I hope, on YouTube on behalf of the state. I think the tribe might also be listening in, so we'll take it up next week at the business meeting. Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on. Underground storage tank for the...
You got number three.
That is three.
Oh. Let's see your agenda. Well, I'd have a different agenda.
I understand that number three is interest in potential purchase of...
Yeah.
How'd it done it?
That's... You got that copy on Friday, is that correct?
I just saw it laying here when I came in. Okay.
Okay. Yeah, interesting.
Oh, okay. So item number three is me. This is actually... Never mind. I won't opine. But I received a call on Friday from a realtor in our community who has a client who's concerned about a residence for our first responders, specifically Hayden Deputies, OEM, and who was the third party that we have targeted for the armory?
Canines and detectives.
Canines and detectives, thank you. And basically, he was talking about purchasing the armory or doing some such thing. And when I explained the situation to the agent, the real estate agent, that is, I said, "Well, you have to realize that we own the armory, but we don't own the land, and the land per the appraisal, which of course is public knowledge at this point, is $294,000." And so I don't know... I guess I'm more or less asking, "I don't know how this would work." We have a party, and this could be... Maybe he doesn't realize what's involved, but I took the time, took about a half hour with the agent, and explained the situation. And I said, "Look, number one, I don't know if we can take a private contribution that purchases the land while we have possession of the armory and housing our own people." So I'm just throwing it out there, and I wish legal were here because I think it's a legal question more than anything else. I don't know how qualified the party is. I have no clue who it is, but I'm bringing it up, and... Any thoughts?
Well, I guess my question is, are they planning on renting it back to OEM?
No. My discussion was, if he purchases it, he purchases it, and we house them there. He's actually looking to make a contribution.
Oh, a donation.
A donation. That's probably a better way to put it.
Okay.
So I can qualify. I can go further, but I think I also need to consult legal because this is, I'm going to say, rather bizarre. Sean?
I think they probably should talk to legal.
Yeah, no kidding.
But I think that would be a good... If you can get that done, it would be great. And it could just be that they donate the money to the county, and then the county turns around.
However, however, we do that.
I don't... Just from what I've learned, the little bit that I have learned, I don't think the FAA cares where the money comes from.
Correct.
As long as the money gets paid.
That's correct.
So that was my two cents.
That's correct. Thank you.
Thanks.
Did I miss... Are we on this?
So, yeah, we're good now because we're on...
Property tax relief?
Underground storage.
Oh, underground storage. Go right ahead.
But hold on. Let's not leave this one. So will you consult with legal about how this donation and all that?
Yes. I will consult with legal and find out if this is even doable.
Okay.
And I'll also, after that, I'll go back to the agent, the real estate agent, and further qualify to see how potentially real this is.
And I think, yeah, I think part of the problem will be solved if there is just a donation outright to Cootney County because selling our property has to go through publication and all that kind of stuff, so...
Precisely.
Okay.
Good point. Good point.
Restricted donation.
There you go.
Thank you.
Otherwise, we'd have to go to the highest bidder.
Right.
I'll get this over here. Restricted donation. Thank you. Okay, Sean, take it away. Underground storage tank.
Okay. So last week, Tom and I had a conference call with the folks from Petroleum, PTSF, Petroleum Tank Storage Fund. So now if I say PTSF, everybody knows what I'm referring to. And the PTSF people feel that we're really close to finally getting this done and get it behind us. So we reviewed the letter, which I sent you a copy of, from Mark Kalbaugh regarding the most recent tests that we had done. And if you just look at the letter at face value, it looks really like, man, I don't know if we can pull this off. But when you talk to the engineers, this is going to be pretty simple. So the key to the whole thing is in number one, where an environmental covenant would be required in the absence of assessing impacts below eight feet below the surface. We don't... Option number two is... Well, there's two options in one. Either we go down eight to nine feet and we give them a soil sample. If that contamination is down eight to nine feet, now we have a big problem because now we start talking about compromising the structure of the foundation. And then we open another Pandora's Box. I don't think we want to do that. So option number two, which is also in number one, is what's called an environmental covenant. Basically, and I gave you an example of one in your emails. Basically, what this does is it places a deed restriction on the property. And it says the site's contaminated. The contaminated site is mapped out by the DEQ, and then all we have to do is send them, which is part of this packet that I gave you. There's a document that we send into them once a year saying nothing has changed. The reason for the environmental covenant is so that you can't sell this property to Hilton and not have everybody know that there's contaminated ground. So in talking to the engineers from PTSF, they highly recommend, and so do I, that we would go ahead and move forward with the environmental covenant. I have an email from them saying that they would be willing to send this to the DEQ and have the DEQ get it started, if I can have board approval to move ahead with this. And then the DEQ would send it back to our engineers and the county for review. We don't... I don't... Well, I'll talk to legal. I don't know that we have anybody who's really an expert in this field. And so that... It was brought up on the call that we still have over $400,000 left in coverage for this, and that PTSF would pay for a lawyer if we had to retain somebody from the outside because, you know, I think Pat's probably going to be pretty good with deed restrictions and that kind of stuff. So I think we'll be fine, but if we have to seek outside help, it's paid for. So I guess at this point, questions?
So if we enter into this environmental agreement and we decide later that we have an opportunity to give that sample of eight to nine feet down, can we get out of the environmental covenant?
I don't have the answer to that.
Okay. So I would probably want that written into the covenant, that some ways to get out of the covenant.
That is to say, if it came back clean?
Yes. Yeah.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay. Okay. I'll find out about that. And we can... We... For now, I would just like direction to go ahead and get it started. And then we can add language to it, and I'll ask JR and Dave if that's a possibility because you're right. They even said on the call, correct me if I'm right, but that the earth is doing its thing in, you know...
Yeah.
Yeah, dissipating the diesel. So yeah, that's a good point.
You have to tell us what...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's the Italian thing. This is doing this.
Natural filtration.
Mark that down.
Yeah.
Okay. So you're ready to go forward?
Yes. All I need to do is, if you guys approve, I'm going to send JR an answer back to his last email and say, "Go ahead and draft it, send it to DEQ, and then get it back to us." And then I'll bring it forward, and then we'll address your question. There might be some other things that might come out of this, too, so...
Yes. I'm fine with moving forward. Did you have something, Dina?
I just wanted to say, has anybody talked to ICRA? Has it entered into the covenant? I'm wondering if that would affect our insurance coverage in some way? That might be a question to toss in there, but would ICRA affect it?
I can do that.
Thank you, Sean.
Yeah. I'll follow up on that.
Okay, great. Thanks, Dina.
So are we good?
Yes. Go right ahead.
All right. Perfect. Thank you.
So are we on property tax relief update?
Yes.
With urban... And with regard to urban renewal district and some figures. Leslie?
Yes, I will turn this over to Dina because they... Their team has some information.
All right. So I'll turn this to you electronically. This is just something for you to think about and reflect upon from now until the budget hearing.
So we've been getting a lot of documents through regarding this tax relief, and we have several documents that we refer to as we've been evaluating this. So I kind of wanted to just give you a snapshot so that you could just very easily evaluate. So we have the executive order from the governor explaining his view and his decree. We have the U.S. Treasury guidance, the original authoritative guidance. The last date on that was 6/30/2020. They updated the FAQ page, which is not authoritative guidance, but tries to clarify the actual guidance. That was updated on 8/10. And then the Idaho State Tax Commission on the 13th last week sent us information on the new L-2. So we're going to have this kind of imaginary levy rate if we apply the tax relief to it, but it won't affect next year's calculation for new growth. We would use the levy rate as if we hadn't taken the tax relief.
Okay.
So for each element, I just have what each document refers to for that element for you to look at. In general, we still haven't seen a real change from the authoritative guidance on what number we're using and if this is allowable or not. The... I wasn't here last week, but the part of the governor's resolution that gave me pause was he got positive reinforcement from the Treasury Department that this program was sound, but we don't know what level of authority that was at the U.S. Treasury, and we don't know if there's anything in writing that they would back us up if there was an audit or if the Treasury determined that it wasn't appropriate, what would happen to us. So it's just big things to think about. On the back of this page, I also have some possible risks that the auditor's office sees if this goes sideways. So I just wanted... I don't want to belabor the point. I know that it's been talked through a number of times, but I just wanted to give you a snapshot so that if you're looking at the guidance pages, if you're looking at these documents, this kind of gives you a shorthand to the key points so that when we come to our budget hearing, you have an informed decision and you feel comfortable with that decision.
So our deadline is the budget hearing?
That's the deadline, and it sounds like that's going to be... You're going to render a decision then on if you're going to participate or not. The auditor's office still feels that we should use the actual number and not the projected number recommended for administrative convenience, which would be a very immaterial number.
Go back to the statement you made regarding new growth for next year.
So part of this is, when we're giving back money, it's going to change the levy rate.
Yes.
Because the total taxes levied are going to be different, which affects that ratio between our property value and how much tax we're taking in theory. So on our L-2 report to the State Tax Commission, we have to show what that levy rate is, what that calculation is. Well, that'll be affected if we take the tax relief. But if we were to use that new levy rate next year for our new growth, we would see a precipitous drop in the amount that we could actually realize. We would basically cheat ourselves out of our new growth for next year. So what the State Tax Commission said is, for calculating next year's new growth, you can use that levy rate as if you never took the tax relief. So it's the actual levy rate, not this presumed levy rate with that relief in there.
Okay. So the presumed levy rate being the one that Keith just calculated for us?
Not the new one. Okay. So the one that is published in the paper right now, we would use that for new growth next year. Yeah. That is not going to be our true levy rate that brings the taxes in.
Okay.
Yeah. The true levy rate, if we take the governor's program, is going to be a lot lower. Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, exactly.
We're just going to proceed as if this never happened as we go forward, but we have to report to the state this presumed levy rate because we have to take into account this reduction. So it's just for reporting purposes.
Okay, okay.
It's not for future calculation purposes. Does that make sense?
Yes. What I found interesting is when I looked at... I did some calculating of my own when I took Keith's new levy rate.
Yeah.
And I figured out that on a $100... Excuse me. On a $300,000 home, which by the way is becoming rapidly diminishing, what's our new median? And I think we're at 350 or 360.
Yeah, it's getting north of 350.
In any case, the savings, if we were to opt into the program, would have been about $153 on a $300,000 home.
Yeah. Yeah.
Just... I'm just throwing that out.
Anyway, it's a hard decision, but I just kind of wanted to bring all the elements together for you for decision-making purposes.
Okay, great.
And what I would like to do in this next week is hit social media hard and have NWPOA and some other organizations reach out to their members and let them know what the benefits are and the risks are, just so everybody understands what property tax relief could mean down the road. So that's kind of...
And feel free to use this, post this.
Yeah, I appreciate that. It actually saves me.
Yeah.
And it is interesting because there's risk beyond the $10 million.
Yes.
Right.
That's bad enough, but then as somebody advised me last week, 30% of our property holders basically have their taxes escrowed. So when that escrow gets refigured and they enjoy the savings, now they potentially get a double hit the following year.
Yes.
Because the values are rising, so the initial amount is restored and then some.
Yeah.
There are risks. There's no question.
Yeah. And it sounds good, but there is no free lunch, so...
That's exactly...
It's tough. It's a tough one. Anyway...
But I think the campaign makes a lot of sense. Cool. Thank you, Dina.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Oh, did you want to say anything to the URDs, how they're figured?
Yeah, that's right.
So that was the other part of the State Tax Commission in their communication as part of this L-2 thing. So when the state came out with this program, it said that the URDs would be made whole because basically URDs depend on the new growth, and that would be affected by this new levy rate. So the state's promised the URDs that they would make them whole. make them whole. So, if we were to get this distribution, which they haven't said when the check's coming, or how that's gonna be distributed, that the county could deduct 3% for administrative costs.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
And deduct, we would also deduct whatever it took to make the URDs whole. So, whatever that pot of money is left, that's what we would give out as tax relief. So, your 150 could be substantially less, depending upon the portion that the URD would get.
Right, okay.
So, we have to make the URDs whole before we distribute.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so moving on to, I guess it's item number?
Six.
Six, yeah, okay. All right, that's okay. Cootney County Facilities Purchase and Lease. Leslie?
Yeah, I would like to enter into executive session and kind of give updates on some private companies that we're working with. So, I move that we enter into executive session pursuant to IDOL Code 74-2061C, and I would like Sean to stay for this.
I second the motion. Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the motion is carried, entering into executive session. We do not have an attorney present with us today, however.
with the Vista as far as power, and then I have to, I would have to get in touch with the wastewater folks to make sure that the sewer line is marked and capped. But, it's relatively a simple procedure. So, I'm not doing anything on any of the asbestos testing yet, until you decide if they can't, if they don't have the money, which way you wanna go. So, I'm just gonna leave that on the back for now.
I would like to bring them in again the beginning of September, to find out if we're gonna need to publish this for sale, or if, or not.
So, Labor Day is September 6th, is it, 7th?
7th. So, they could either do Tuesday, the 8th, if you wanna do that, because that's when our status update will be. Or if you want them on a whole separate meeting, I can just look at the calendar. You want them a status update, or?
What do you think? You want a separate meeting?
I think it...
Let's give them the time.
I wanna do it at the status update, but I think we should do a separate meeting.
Yeah, let's go, yeah, let's give them the time. Let's schedule an hour.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I think that's only fair and reasonable. Okay, so we can do that. So, we'll move on. Okay, Citizen Advisory Committee, that's after the...
Audit hearing.
Audit hearing, okay, fine. Fire Station at the Fairgrounds, Dave Ferguson's out today. I understand he's reviewing it, or has finished. I don't know where we are at the present time, but I guess we're close. So, I don't have anything further to add. I'll have to check with Dave when he gets back.
I second the motion.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the motion is carried. And so, we're back into regular session where our final item, which is the pending items status review. And so, okay, so the first item is the Roamer House, and it designates all three of us, but they did have their concert Friday night. I was there for about 30 minutes around 5:00 o'clock or so. The prohibitions were entirely respected. There was no one on the stairs that was chained off, no one on the porch. Came back again around 7:00 o'clock, and they had music going, and once again, everything was respected, everything was orderly. Not that many people in attendance. The music was good, very good, but unfortunately...
How many people?
When I came back at 7:00, maybe 10:00, I'm not including the musicians.
I understand.
Yeah. And there might have been others that stopped by in between, but everything was fine, so that's it.
They're scheduled Wednesday from 12:00 to 2:00.
Okay.
Tomorrow.
Oh, is that tomorrow?
The 18th is tomorrow.
Tomorrow's the 18th.
How did I do that?
For more tours, is that what that is?
Are you available tomorrow?
Yeah. I don't have anything on the business meeting, that's unusual.
Okay.
So, yeah, I'll be, good. Well, that just frees up Wednesday afternoon.
[laughing]
I did talk with Ted Lancy. Demolition permit is over the counter, and it's $90. So, there has to be some coordination with the Vista as far as power, and then I would have to get in touch with the wastewater folks to make sure that the sewer line is marked and capped, but it's relatively a simple procedure. So, I'm not doing anything on any of the asbestos testing yet until you decide if they can't, if they don't have the money, which way you want to go. So, I'm just going to leave that on the back for now.
I would like to bring them in again, the beginning of September, to find out if we're going to need to publish this for sale or if we're not.
So, Labor Day is September 6th, is it, the 7th?
7th. So, they could either do Tuesday, the 8th, if you want to do that, because that's when our status update will be, or if you want them on a whole separate meeting, I can just look at the calendar. You want them a status update, or...
What do you think? You want a separate meeting?
I think you...
Let's give them the time.
I want to do it at the status update, but I think we should do a separate meeting.
Yeah, let's go, yeah, let's give them the time. Let's schedule an hour.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I think that's only fair and reasonable. Okay, so we can do that. So, we'll move on. Okay, Citizen Advisory Committee, that's after the...
OJ.
OJ hearing, okay, fine. Fire Station at the Fairgrounds, Dave Ferguson's out today. I understand he's reviewing it or has finished. I don't know where we are at the present time, but I guess we're close. So, I don't have anything further to add. I'll have to check with Dave when he gets back. Moving on, U of I Extension, New Home. I guess the only thing that we can say at this time is that we're in negotiations for a possible facility for them, and that was something that we can't really go into outside of executive session at this time. Body Scanner, Bill?
They're still looking for the money.
Okay, I met with Dan this morning, Dan Matos. It was actually on another topic.
Yeah.
But I guess, and Deana, maybe I should add, Dan indicated that he feels they have the money. Is that a fair statement? What is it, $115?
$118 and change.
$118.
Something like that.
So, is that where we are?
Yeah, I'll call Dan and find out when it's on. I'll check and find out when they're going to install it, and I'll report to you with our next status update.
Okay. Facilities Expansion?
Yeah, there's nothing to report because we're just going to publish it on August 31st.
Okay, fine.
Yeah, I'm going to get it to Terry today, today or tomorrow.
And that's for the Architectural RFQ?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the RFQ.
Got it.
Yep.
And until the Armory is settled, there's nothing to report on the PAC lease.
Okay, nothing there. And then State of the County. Nancy, do you want to say anything? Why don't you come up? I mean, we know our respective areas, but go ahead. You've met with Nancy.
Well, just to let you know that Nancy Pluff and I did speak last week, and we do have a list, if anyone's interested, of the KPIs she'll go over. Basically, the thought is very minimal introduction, potentially more of a who is at the county, kind of go over who our elected officials are, and then a small nod to Rich Hauser.
Good.
And then an introduction into, after that, Commissioner Philios would go, and then I think you're second, or are you...
Or third, I don't, I don't remember what we decided.
So, we can decide that order. That's, I think that's our last question. Commissioner Philios is doing a PowerPoint. When he finishes that, then we'll just have a holding screen that has each of your names with the seal when you're speaking. And then at the end, for example, Nancy's going to talk about historical information for elections and what the turnout was in the primary, and then I'm going to step in and remind everyone how to get their ballots online, and we're really going to start pushing that with elections. So, a few of those little, we're going to talk about population numbers and then remind them about the census, just a few of those little back and forths, but it should be pretty brief.
Okay. And that'll all happen first?
That part is scheduled at the end after you've all spoken.
Okay.
Because that way, if you take it most of the time speaking, as you should, then we can make that fit into whatever is needed.
Timeframe, okay. So, I would request to go third, just in case we are running short on time. I can cut mine.
Yeah, and that's the way it's indicated. You're right.
Okay.
Okay.
So, we'll set that up for...
Q and A, 10 minutes, 15 minutes? Did you...
Probably about 10 minutes. We usually don't see a lot of Q and A at this, but we want to make sure we built that time in.
Okay, fair enough. Anything else?
And if there's anything we can do to help any of you, let us know.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Appreciate yours and Nancy's time.
Can we talk about the Armory?
I'm sorry?
Is that part of PAC?
Oh, so the Armory is really under Facilities. Did you want to go...
Well, if it's not on the agenda, I don't need, I just want to remind everybody that there's still that grant money sitting out there.
With OEM?
And the clock is ticking for me, to get that done. So, I don't want it to just, I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but I don't want it to fall off the chalkboard and then...
Much of it hinges on your $130.
There you go.
Right.
Thank you. I was just going to say that, and again, there's another board involved here, right?
No, I understand that, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of moving parts.
Yeah, there are, there are. And my guess is, I think we're going to have to proceed with whatever we decide to do with the Armory, almost irrespective of what happens with the other situation.
Yes.
That's kind of my guess. Because I think we're able to potentially move faster than they are.
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, there's no question you're going to be able to move quicker than that situation can.
We all set then?
Yep.
Time is now 12 noon. Oh, public comment? None? Meeting adjourned, thanks.